...majority order for tonight, start by the. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, I think everybody's been here before, uh, if anybody's signed in. Oh, we got somebody else coming in. We, please silence your cell phones, pagers, and all the rest of the goodies that you got, your smartwatches and everything, so we don't get, uh... So we don't get interrupted, um... You know where the, uh, fire assets are, and so we're good to go there. Next item up is the approval of minutes, mind me. Have any issues? Or against, or the, any changes in the minutes I should say? Nope. I have a motion to approve the minutes. Second?
Second.
Second, and all in favor, see if I'm saying aye? Aye.
All abstained.
Abstained. Or errant, staying. Okay, legal notices were published. We have a continued subdivision public hearing on the, um, Barmen, uh, two lot subdivision. Who do we have for that?
Is there anyone?
We go to the online. Jeremy, but I do not believe these are the Barmen subdivision.
Okay, then, well, let's ask. Probably done. Do we want to move forward with this, or you want to put it off and see if anybody shows, or how do you want to end?
I would put it off, see if anybody shows. Nobody shows.
Alright, it is a public hearing, so we'll just continue the public hearing, uh, until later in the meeting, and then we'll make a decision on it. So, next item up then is the site plan. TP 0401-22 final site plan for Tomra, and I know we got Tomra people here. So tell us what, where we're at with the final site plan.
Hi, uh, so Nicole from Fisher Associates, uh, Phil, Anna, and I from Fisher Associates, and we have Jeremy, Stormwater Massey from Zora Online.
Okay.
So, uh, we submitted the final site plan, um, a month ago, uh, so, um, we did address your previous comments of, um, at the land site plan. Um, so that has been added. Uh, we did make adjustments to the easement that Tom's staff has requested, um, and we're working on Tom's staff on the easement package, um, and I believe, so.
Uh, yeah, and, uh, since then, we've seen, um, comments come on the, uh, final plans from MRB. Uh, we addressed the comments for MRB, and I believe today, Cole, will we send back our response letter?
Yes.
Yeah, I saw a little bit. Anything else before we go to staff?
I think that's pretty much it. We have had meetings of staff, um, and the, um, therapy meetings, um, so everyone has worked staff on, um, a couple of various items for the easements and the water credit.
Cool, okay, turn it over to Ron.
I directed a resolution for consideration, approval with conditions. Uh, you may want to ask, uh, what the statuses of this electrical issue that's come up that I understand still hasn't been addressed.
Yeah, certainly, gives it every damn, I'm sure. Hey, Dan?
Yeah, I'll jump right into that, uh, the Fire Marshal has been working with them, uh, what Tomra should say, uh, on a bunch of things, on his fire inspection. There has been an outstanding item for their fuel tank. It still isn't installed, uh, you know, a matter that could be approved by the town. Uh, I do know that they've been working on this, but this fire inspection has been open for over six months, so, uh, it definitely, things need to be wrapped up and completed. Uh, I know that Ron sent you some communications just a few days ago about this still, and I know I just got the phone Fire Marshal about forty-five minutes ago, and it's still very much not completed at this point. Uh, so I just want the board to be aware of this situation, uh, and maybe you guys have some comment?
I do have an update on that. I believe we, um, have decided, or Tomra has decided to go with the path of completely removing, uh, the fuel tank from the site. Um, I don't know, Jeremy, if you have an update on that as well?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna move forward on just removing that fuel tank. That'll be done within two weeks.
Okay. Anything else, Dan?
Um, no, I mean, it, I'm glad to hear that comment, but again, this has been going on for many months, back and forth.
Right.
And I understand that they're saying now another two weeks, but.
What, what is the fuel tank for? So maybe. Jeremy, do you know what the fuel tanks are?
I, I, they, these, I'm not, you know, I'm not exactly sure, but it's not, it's not anything to us of any major relevance, so the discussion we had internally was let's just remove it and remove the issue, so that's what we're gonna do.
It's an bulk ground tank?
Yeah.
It is.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's a bulk ground tank. It has the enclosure, uh, or containment system underneath it, just in the wrong spot. Well, it's not even the wrong spot, it's just wired incorrectly.
Yeah.
Uh, so, and I, I mean, I'm not gonna get into all the details of inspection, but, uh, I, what we would like to see is, uh, maybe the board would consider a condition. These things be fixed in a timely manner, or put a timeframe on it, uh, close out the fire inspection, because like I said, the inspection itself's been open for six months.
Right, well, I think, you know, when we get to that point, I'm gonna offer a condition for the final site plan that all fire issues who go deal electrical be completed in a fire marshal that signed off on the inspection prior to any of us signing the final site. And that will, I think.
Also add in there that the inspection will be paid for, because we will, we have built the, uh, the site plans. So then we can officially close out that inspection.
Okay, so the inspection will be completed, signed off, and paid for prior to our signatures on the document. Lance, so let's skip to you, and then I'll get back to you.
Now, we're all working towards potential pre-con, signatures of the plans, one of the things that we require. Would, would, would it be okay to change that to issuance of a permit, or do we prefer signatures on the plans?
I would, I would prefer signatures on the plans, because I just.
I just wouldn't have that one to make sure.
Well, that, that's a discretion of the board, but my concern, again, is just the timeframe of this going out. Uh, if they're gonna remove it, I think that this takes care of it fairly quickly, and it shouldn't hold up too long, that's one thing, but it would be nice to get this closed down.
Thanks, just for the record, the two weeks would occur before the pre-con would occur anyway, because the pre-con wouldn't happen, so I may appear at C meeting anyway, just to point that out. There is some time.
Okay, alright, uh, I had one other thing, is the stormwater maintenance agreement. We do have the original copy. It is on the agenda for the board to accept and approve, uh, after their review of next Tuesday night, Tom, so that was actually one of the conditions of preliminary. So, it is in the works, just so this board is aware of it, and we will take care of that as well.
Cool, anything else, Dan? Nope, I'm all set. Highway?
Um, well, you know, I'm all for the abandonment of the road, but in order to get this moving along, um, you were to design the turnaround at the end, the hammerhead. But now I see in there that you have, there's an easement back there for a turnaround?
Correct, there is an existing easement for access right there at the end of Tomma Trail, where Tomma Trail ends. Um, that's shown on our plans, uh, multiple sheets, but it's definitely in C 105, uh, which is our existing conditions overall plan. Um, so that, that, uh, that term, basically it's a turnaround easement, it's, it's an access easement. Um, it's right there, already existing at the end, um, because we're, we're moving towards the abandonment, um, we don't have a turnaround, a proposed turnaround drawn in there, uh, because we know that eventually it's only here, but currently, that area is already asphalt pavement. Uh, so it, it is accessible, where you know, maybe if you, if, um, or you see maybe easement.
Is it asphalt?
Yeah, beyond Tomma Trail, there's, there's asphalt back there. It's asphalt pavement back there. So the, the, what is being shown is they have an access, they have an access easement over Tomma Trail, which creates stability to get to the town. That would be requirement one. The second part of that is that Tomma Trail has to end with a, with a hammerhead turnaround, but because Tomma Trail where it ends, and then the rest of the site continues, it's all asphalt pavement. My understanding is, is that they have an easement basically outlining where the hammerhead would be, and that would be all on top of hard surface already, that's out there.
Correct. The easement in place of the hammerhead is in place, or will be in place, thus you don't necessarily need the hammerhead, and plus, we're moving toward the abandonment end.
Right.
But we'll need to update, uh, condition nines and, uh, reword that some to make that, make that work. The condition nine says there's no note, the, the construction of the hammerhead turnaround is to be shown on the drawing, and install no later than February 1st October, or a formal abandonment procedure for Tomma Trail has been introduced to the town board, so we will need to change that just a little bit in wording. Um, that there is existing easement for a hammerhead.
Proposed easement, existing pay. There's also an existing, there is an existing easement there, it's just for the turnaround, but we are proposing the stormwater easement, which will go over the top of that.
Yeah, I would, yeah, we would want a new one, just to make sure that.
Right, right. I mean, that other, my fault. That other easement is, it can be there either way.
Got it, yeah, I got it, okay.
Is it, I thought at the last meeting, is that where the car probably actually trailers now at the end of the driveway, so it's knocked off all the time?
For the back.
It's for the back? I was just making sure, do you remember, we had a discussion at the last meeting about the trailer staging or something, not doing the road, but I know we're gonna abandon the road, but I just don't have a block, in case.
Well, again, and there's a process.
Right.
And the process, as you started, we have, and the petitioning for, like, we heard, the town board to abandon the road.
Issue that's part of that.
Right, that's what I'm saying, that's. Anything else, Tim? Lance?
No, uh, I remember your group did issue a comment letter. We did get the responses. I went through the responses. I'm pretty satisfied with the comments that we received. Um, stormwater is being addressed. I don't really have anything additional to add to that. Maintenance agreement, though, provided. Stormwater maintenance agreement, we did review, is the town's form, so we're satisfied with that. Um, we had some comments, just to inform them that there was gonna be a record drawing requirement of the town, which is typical of the town, so I've been working with Tomra on, on that language and what that would look like. Uh, of course, that's on the back end of the process. We've been working with them on the letter credit as well. I believe our last correspondence back to them made some suggestions, and I think they're working on making those revisions. Once we get that letter cut it off in the back, we should be in a position to approve it, and then forward that recommendation to you guys for action. Um, and then the last thing I want to bring up is, as shown on the plans, there is a stormwater easement over what is, I want to say, the relocated stormpipe, that's being relocated in that parking area. So, my opinion is, is that only the town wants to take ownership or dedication of that. I don't know if that's the intent of the easement or not. I like the idea of having access to it, so for, for inspection purposes, but I don't, the town has very specific templates on easements, and I just want to make sure the record reflects that. The town doesn't want to take dedication of, of that utility, because all the rest of them are all private.
Right, uh, and that initially came up before, uh, the topic of the, I mean, Tomma Trail, um, because if Tomma Trail is owned by the town, that's the town's stormwater that's going into the system that is crossing across the property.
Understood.
So, uh, it really was for inspection purposes anyway, and to be able to access it and clean it out.
Alright, I'm okay with that, that might be part of the problem. If we, the reasons for dedication, there's a whole nother process that goes with that, and that just letter credit reasons, record drawing reasons, the fact that the town doesn't want to have any utilities on the site that really don't have a need for it. So I just wanted to make sure it was clear that the easement was really just for purposes of inspection, if we'd be, and access to, if we'd be.
Correct, so we don't intend to dedicate that by.
Okay, anything else? Anything else from the applicant? Jeremy, online? Okay, we'll turn it to the, uh, board, Aaron.
Um, so one of, one of my questions was the whole Tomma Trail thing. I think the first part, it's, it's been answered. I just need some clarification on what exactly went on. Um, so, at some point, there's no timeframe of when you're taking that over? It's just that at some, some point in timeframe?
Yeah, it's up to town.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's most likely for, uh, we're gonna start that process in May, but I, I know the last time we spoke with, uh, we weren't entirely sure what that process was, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure either. I mean, it's something with the town board, if they then initia- initiated by the applicant to the town board, and what the process then is, I don't know what.
So, so I think Fisher will probably reach out to the town staff and try and work out what that actual process is, as we work through it.
I don't ever remember twenty-five years doing that, so.
Well, we did it once, I haven't sectioned it, but it's, yeah.
Okay. Alright, so.
My second part on that, and staff, please, um, correct me if I'm wrong, or are there something I'm missing? Um, so in your, your packet, the property maintenance policy, you know, so you got parking lots and asphalt driveways, and then you got camera trail. So if you take that over, obviously, we want, we want to keep that, because we have the higher, it's, it's, it's pretty big for us, um. Where, where is it that you're gonna take care of the asphalt? Take care of the, I mean, you, so in parking lots and asphalt driveways, you talk about asphalt surfaces. On Tomma Trail, you just talked about cleanliness.
So, right now.
I think, I think, I'm, I, I understand what you're asking, but right now it's the town's, so the maintenance is the town's responsibility. As part of that abandonment agreement, my understanding is there'd be new language that will have to be written and filed as part of whatever that agreement is. For example, there may be a need for another easement to provide access to one of the, the rear parcels that are back there. So I think a lot of that language, and, and this is where I looked around, and other staff, I'll be, my understanding is that language is developed as part of that process. That they, I'm not saying they can't be in there as a what-if now, but we reviewed it and approved it based on the basis that currently, as it stands today, it meets the, the criteria.
Okay.
Because who really knows if it'll be a, should, but they're gonna get hold up for years, I don't know, so, so it's Tom road until it's, so it's not, so there's no need to have what he's saying right now. My understanding that that would be, whatever the town board agrees upon, it would be part of that, that review and that agreement, and there would be new language that would be introduced to how that will be maintained, what easements would be needed, so that's fine.
Yeah, that makes sense, okay. Um, that was it then, thank you.
Adrian?
Uh, all your comment I had was on the tree selection, I think, you know, the trees, the sizing of them was full height, I mean, the planting height should be called up. Um, you know, something that would be similar to probably the, to the guidelines, I think, for upper greens, six feet or so, so, uh, I don't know.
I believe we're looking ahead to put in that, that height.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That was one of your statements.
Okay, I thought I said mature, right, maybe, so?
Then it does say mature, but we're looking to get it matured.
But that's mature, okay. Okay, Andrew, that's, that's sufficient.
Anything else?
That was it.
Okay, so the way I see it, right now, we need to, we need to rewrite nine to.
That's the construction of the hammerhead part.
We need to rewrite nine so that it... Or do we even need nine now that we know we already have an easement to allow you to turn around? Is that going to be good enough, Tim, for you, let's just say, heaven forbid it never gets abandoned? Are you okay with the easement rather than a physical turnaround, or?
One, yeah.
Can you read, can you read nine again? I'm just sorry, I don't read.
Nine says, there should, there is to be a note added to the drawing, C 105, there being just, the construction of the hammerhead turnaround is to be shown on this drawing, and is to be installed no later than October 31st, 22, or formal abandonment procedures for Tomma Trail have been introduced to the town board, thereby eliminating the percent hammerhead construction. So if we already have an easement for turnaround, do you still need a hammerhead?
I think that, well. Well, I mean, I've, I've seen the area where you guys pushed the snow, I was down there, and that's, I'm assuming where the easement is, we'll have to make sure, but is that area all paved down there?
It is, and it's, it is not the greatest pavement, I'll give you that, but part of the maintenance plan is to, you know, address that as well, so, um... Yes, it is pavement, and it will be maintained as part of our, our maintenance plan that we presented as part of this project. What if, what if we just add in to the town highway superintendent satisfaction, where after the words, construction of the hammerhead, to the town highway superintendent satisfaction? Just a suggestion, and then I think, because construction, there still may be.
Should we just say, or an easement? Just say, the construction of the hammerhead. Ryan, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, just showing on one of the detailed drawings, the detail of the hammerhead turnaround from the site design and development criteria, is gonna take less time than we're gonna discuss it tonight. Okay, and, and, and the item, the concern here is, okay, this condition says that that is to be put on those drawings, that there's gonna be a turnaround, okay, and it's gonna meet Tom's standards. Now, doesn't have to be constructed if by October 31st, there's a formal abandonment process in, in place.
That's, I mean, we're giving. We think there will be, because we think May will be the start.
Exactly, so the only thing I would add to this, uh, uh, not later than October, uh, 31st. If you want to throw in there that the town highway superintendent's approval, um...
I don't think you need it, Ron, but, you know, I don't think you need it either. I think it's okay the way that.
Are you okay with nine the way it is? Are you guys okay with nine the way it is, for now?
Yeah, that's fine, based on, on, uh, what Ron was just saying, I mean, we can add, I would say, if you'd up to it.
Okay, so it takes, okay. Alright, so given that nine's gonna stay the way it is, we need to add another condition, number, well, whatever the number is, John can figure that out. And it needs to say that the fire inspection will be finalized, will be, what's the right word? Finalized, accepted, and will pay for prior to signature of the final site.
That will work, by Tom's state.
By Tom's state.
Yeah, either, either the thing is removed from the site, therefore, no need for, you know, to get that up the site.
And it's done, and then, as long as there aren't any other Fire Marshal issues that have been holding up this fire inspection for six months.
Are there any other issues that are?
So, I didn't ask that question, I just know the one that was most pressing, um, I believe everything else was completed, but again, I would have to go back and look at the report, but I'd be.
We're saying that the thing has to be checked, like the Fire Marshal says, everything's good, we have to pay the bill, that means everything's good, so if there's five more things that we don't know about tonight, I mean, his report has to be good.
And this thing's been gone off for six months, so. So we'll just add that as a condition, so given that, we have the conditions, we have the added one condition about the fire inspection. Uh, the applicant's okay with those conditions?
Sir.
You guys are okay? Alright, so we have a resolution with condition, do I have a motion to weigh the rating and approve the resolution as presented with changes and conditions? So, move back, Adrian, second one.
Aaron?
Aaron, any other comments? Clerk, take a little call, both of you.
I think.
Aye.
Aaron, sweetie.
Aye.
Avery Bellas.
Aye. Aye, okay. Good to go, thanks for working with the town on this, and once you get that fire inspection done, sign those plans, you can move forward, get that abandoned paperwork going on too, so we can get that enrolling, and I have no clue how long that's gonna take, done whatsoever.
Thank you so much.
Alright, no problem, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, maybe, Jeremy. Okay, so next item up, why is going back to, let's go back now, yeah. Since it's a preliminary two lot, do we need them?
Do we need?
What, what do your rules procedure say?
Says we may, they, they should, but I don't think it's mandatory. I just happen to have a copy. I don't remember.
You know, perhaps you could ask Mr. Chairman if anybody in the room, or anybody online, uh, objects to continuation of your decision on this, uh, in the absence of a formal presentation.
Okay, since this is a public hearing, and we're talking about TP 0301-22 preliminary two lot subdivision approval for the estate of Trudy Barmen, um, so since we don't have the applicant or any representation, do we have anyone in the room that would like to, uh, would have any issues with continuing this, uh, the discussions on this project, is in lieu of a review of the, um, application?
Formal, yeah.
Right, and anyone online, I don't, we have anybody online left?
Jeremy, you do not have any else on?
Okay, so hearing none, I assume that two of you don't have any issues. Uh, let's go to staff, and let's talk about this one, this one sounds like something we should be able to knock out.
Yeah, it's a, we had originally the drawing, the zoning enforcement officer had identified some concerns with lot number one.
Yep.
Uh, we met with the per- person that's purchasing the land. Uh, the intentions are to increase the size of lot number one, which they did, from five acres to almost nine points on the, if I'm correct, and, uh, thereby eliminating all the previous concerns. It's a two lot subdivision, uh, they added, to my knowledge, all the changes, and I drafted a resolution to approve the, the minor conditions of approval for this. You have a secret resolution, unlisted action, determination of non-significance, you need to, the resolution except for two, three, and you're good to go.
Okay, and?
Yeah, Ron, Ron covered this very nicely, uh, the only thing, yeah, the eight point five acres, uh, and the remainder lands is a hundred and nine point four six acres, so, uh, pretty much all this subdivision is doing, it's cutting the homestead of the barns out from the, the farming land. Uh, and zoning officer, as Ron stated, uh, there was some concerns with how those barns were to the lot lines, if we were to do the original subdivision as presented, uh, those barns would be not usable for livestock. So they've made some adjustments, and, uh, this is where we're at, so.
Okay, Tim, anything from your side?
No.
Lance?
No, I'm good.
Okay, board, any issues with this one?
I don't, nothing.
Okay, so the next item up we have then is secret, correct, John? This isn't a hearing, is it?
Yes, we don't say that.
Pardon? A public hearing, I'm sorry, this is a public hearing, anyone here to speak for or against this application? Again, anyone here to speak for or against this application? Hearing none, go ahead, Ron. There's no one online?
Nobody's up.
Well, say online, but there's no one there. Speak to me if you're not there. Speak to me if you're not there. Okay. John, we have secret, correct? Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Second?
A second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing now closed.
I think you secret.
Secret. Anyone here to, or it's a standard determination of non-significance. Move by Adrian, seconded by Doug, any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote on secret.
Abbeets.
Aye.
Aaron Sweeney.
Aye.
Adrian Bellas.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next item of the month is the resolution with two conditions for the preliminary two lot subdivision. Motion to approve? Move to approve? By Adrian, seconded by Doug again, any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote on the preliminary two lot subdivision.
Abbeets.
Aye.
Aaron Sweeney.
Aye.
Adrian Bellas.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye. Okay, that one's out of the way, it was too simple to have to put off another time.
You, you, I think you handled correctly.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, next item of the month is other board actions, let's get the LLC out of the way, LLC is all clear, good to go, everybody's signed off and sealed, delivered. Motion to approve the letter of credit release for auto wash. So move, move by Adrian, seconded by Doug, any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote please.
Abbeets.
Aye.
Aaron Sweeney.
Aye.
Adrian Bellas.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye. Okay, that one's taken care of, okay. Back review amendments for this special use criteria for mini warehouse. Certainly I've heard a lot of discussions on this on the last couple days, and I'm not a hundred percent convinced we will have enough discussion tonight to be comfortable moving forward with this, but we'll do our best. So Ron, give us kind of an overview of what we've got.
Okay, uh, we have had to introduce a component of the mini warehouse that we previously had allowed, but we didn't really understand all the ramifications of what a conditioned warehouse building was and how it was to be addressed. Um, we do have two sites that I'm aware of in town, one over on ninety-six at the town line that has recently converted the unconditioned building to a conditioned building, and we have the first phase of the Safe Place stories that has a, um, conditioned building in it. And then there's also a third place, which is the always block over there on three thirty-two. Okay, so we were tasked with the, um, assignment of taking a look at what other communities have done based with this new lockdown in the last ten years that has come along, and we drafted some regulations, working with the code officer and the zoning officer, myself and, and Peter Seton, one of the ones. And we drafted some regulations. Uh, the zoning officer sent the regulations on to the zoning board of appeals and to the planning board. Zoning board of appeals didn't address it at their meeting, um, so it's up to the planning board to address it. The, the intent here is to introduce something to the town board so that they can decide at the next meeting on the twenty-sixth of April whether to delay, okay, or not. And, and the reason for that is we have a county deadline to get something into them in the form of amendments to the law. So, you know, if you don't make a decision tonight, that's up to you. Um, I would like to be able to, however, introduce it to the town board so that they have at least two weeks to look at what's going on and, and be able to make a decision. You could still make a recommendation at your meeting on the twentieth. Or you could make a recommendation tonight to go ahead and submit it, and you'll submit something in writing on the twentieth. Um, I think we have identified the concerns, I don't, I'm not aware of any outstanding issues, uh, certainly not my intent to create outstanding issues. Uh, I just tried to explain to everybody what was involved and why we are commending certain things as we move forward. I feel very strongly, and I say this, that right now, uh, these climate controlled buildings have to be put within a fenced in area. I don't think that looks good. I don't think a, a conditioned building that has separate access to get into the building warrants going through a security or a fenced area to get to. And, and just look at the building that you have over there on three thirty-two, think how ugly that would be if you had a fence around it, for, for what purpose? I mean, it serves, in my opinion, no purpose. Other sites, uh, that John and Dan had looked at, uh, at various approaches to how they dealt with it, and I think, you know, that's something that if the applicant doesn't have to spend money putting a fence around a building, he should have.
So on a side note, talk to us about the history of the storefront issue.
Okay, um, when we were looking at this back ten years ago, or eleven, or whatever the time period is now, um, one of the issues that came up was the concern that the town board had at the time for those buildings over there in Commercial Drive that, uh, basically had storefronts, and then the rear portion of those buildings were converted to mini storage facilities. And the town board didn't like the idea that somebody could come in and say they were going to put in a commercial building with a storefront, which is allowed, okay, um, to that building, and, and then all of a sudden have the right to convert it to a mini warehouse, create parking issues and, and things unrelated to the storefront, to the mini warehouse portion of the site. And that's why that land was just put in there to control.
So was more of the issue of creating a storefront first and then a mini warehouse rather than creating and combining mini warehouse with storefront?
Yeah.
Thus having the right parking and all this?
At the time, there were still, and there still is, some land over there that could be further developed for those kinds of uses. And the town board's position was at the time, wouldn't want that.
Okay. All right, Dan?
All right, uh, Ron covered a lot of it fairly nicely, uh, the things that my staff has done and myself, as we've visited and reviewed multiple codes from, um, neighboring districts and faraway districts, uh, and, and within the state. And, um, there's a lot of things, when, whenever we look at updating code, um, some of it, as, as Ron has pointed out, comes from, you know, we get a lot of variances, well, that gives us a good indication that we need to do something. The other thing is, you know, has the code been in place too long and not updated? So, uh, as we reviewed it, we looked at the whole thing, I mean, we didn't take bits and pieces just to fix the condition space, but we looked at the unconditioned space, and we looked at things that might have been required, uh, and where Ron has a lot of great information with the history, uh, we also looked at what other municipalities are doing. Um, you mentioned about the storefronts, and I think the storefronts are a huge concern, but in the example he's giving, I think that we're looking at that we have to come back to site plan now with how code is written, um, and we have to come back and find it. Do we need it in this current code is a question, I don't know, I think that's something that you guys should weigh in on, and I think the town board should weigh in on. Um, and, and that's, when you read through and read, uh, the zoning officer and my remarks, you'll see a lot of those questions about, do we still need this? Or the other thing that we try to do is we try to make things simpler too, so keeping things similar in the districts, so instead of our district having a different setback for many storage, can we keep it all the same? Uh, those were questions that we were asking. Does the setback or the side setback from residential and GI or the LI have to be different? Or could it be the same? Um, we also asked in there, uh, the old code talked about width and length, and then talked about square footage. Usually as we see code, it's either one or the other, we talk about total square footage and allow the applicant to pick the width and length, or you look at width and length and square footage is different than, I mean, uh, so those are all things that we ask and we look at. And, uh, as you saw in the memo that was put out to you guys, um, there's a lot of that kind of questions in there, we're trying to review this and get to, uh, where we need to be. Uh, we talked about fences, we saw a lot of mini storage units without fences, not just for addition, but for unconditioned too, there was no fence at all for these places. And then we saw some that you would have thought was a prison, I mean, it, it truly, there, there wasn't really no rhyme or reason. Um, I, I do think that if we're going to require fences, that maybe we put some regulations on what those fences are going to look like. Um, or maybe we, we leave it as up to the applicant on fences, and if they do put a fence in, they have to follow this kind of design for the fence because this is what we're looking for. I don't know, those are, again, more questions that I think what we want is the, the board to weigh in on it and talk with the supervisor, we really want your guys' opinion so that we could have the vision of what you guys are trying to make for the rest of the town in here as well. Um, so that's sort of where we're at.
So, this is where I'm going for taking.
Go ahead.
So, with the fencing stuff, because that was the last part, I mean, I know what Ron was saying about climate control and stuff, but with our facility, our climate controllability needs fenced, the building walls are part of the fence, so the fence goes up, so it's like, you know, if we're talking about always locked, you go up to the building wall against the road there would be like the fence, and then the fence starts again, so you don't have outside of the building, it's the fence, like a prison, you know? But there's only access through the gate into the building through the gate, you can't get in the building from the outside, you know? So that's what we do where I work. Um, and, you know, climate control is a big popular thing nowadays, so, and with the fencing, I mean, I think, I know there's facilities that don't have them, I mean, I think a lot of people like that extra security on top of getting in even to the climate controllability or the regular storage, and then there's some that might not care about it, but, so I, I think we, it needs to be there somewhere, I don't know if we, you know, I don't know what kind of fencing you say you put up, like if they want just the regular chain link, depending where it is, maybe they have a little bit fancy in the front, like sort of like he does it always lock, because you see it by the road, but I, I think the back's always chain link, isn't it?
So, and that, that was a question that I want to pose to you guys too, that do we say towards public roads, we want a certain block, and yeah, if it's to the back forty, well, chain link's fine. Um, so I wanted to just jump back though, about the fencing and what you said about some people have and some people don't, we, we have talked to multiple facilities as well in, in this review, and you're absolutely right, some facilities say absolutely, we fence it all because that's what my customers want, they want a high security, they, they, okay, great, and then there were some that said, no, you put padlock on the, the door when you run, and that's your security. So, I mean, it was.
But I think, I think you'll see, I don't know if he said it down there, but, I would say more of the storage units in the area that have fencing, have outdoor storage, stuff like camper's RVs, like if you ever creeped doesn't, but. It's just that added protection, I think that you can offer a customer, and I'm not saying everybody has it, but I think, I feel like more places have it when you have RVs, cars, boats that you're storing for customers, because that stuff's not locked, I mean, yeah, the camper door might be locked, but the boat might be just sitting there, you know, so you could break, get a little cover and steal something, so I would say probably more of these places have fences, but I would say we'd have to say it's up to the applicant depending where it's at, you know?
Maybe it requires outside storage, um, you know, or if there's outside storage, then require it because it also.
I mean, that one on ninety-six that Paul Gillette owns, that little one, I mean, that's been there for, I'm going to say a hundred years, I don't know, it feels like a hundred years, it's been here since I've been here. And that one doesn't, has a little gate out of drive, but I don't even know if that's there, but it's not fenced or anything.
I didn't think so, I was thinking of that myself, it's been by hundreds of times.
Well, like Paul's over his previous unit that he has now, it's all built out, I mean, he has a fence, and there's no outside storage, it's just all buildings, but it's like that, yeah, you have a padlock on the door, you have an extra fence, so if somebody break it in, they're jumping the fence or climbing the fence or door, it's turbes, I guess, so. So it would be depending where they really build these, I guess, and how the applicant wants to spend that money.
What my recommendation was, was, you know, give it as an option for fencing, and then give some regulations if they do install fences. Um, say, hey, if it's going to be against one of our public roads, then the, we want this kind of fencing, sort of like what we do in the, uh, site design picture. It was all really good.
So I think that just, I mean, call it out as ornamental or decorative fencing.
And they might not need much, sort of like always not, but just kind of that corner where you go in and then.
But if it's up against a main road, I mean, it should be more than chain link or bar wire.
Right, but remember, there's a setback from these roads, you guys also require landscaping in there, so.
You could still do chain link if you set that, you know?
Yeah.
Realistically, you're on a long enough drag, you were, guys are pulling the, the long, so you all chuck and make a trailer behind it, not the end of it, and then put the code in, get through the gate, probably do it, so. Like you say, there will be setbacks and stuff, and some.
Let me play devil's advocate, you also have LI areas or Jeep or general business districts that, let's just use the new Safe Place one, you're going to recall, are going to require decorative fencing along Collet Road, or just chain link, since it's down over, under, or, or down in a way, it's in whatever, and then along the commercial drop, it was commercial?
Yeah.
Yeah, commercial, is, you're going to do decorative there, it's LI to LI, I mean, where do you?
Well, you'd have to do, you'd have to go like, I mean, that's not a major travel road from, say, you gotta put some high decorative fence, but I mean, he has.
You guys are starting to see where we're.
Yeah, and that's why I'm trying to bring that up, not that I'm going one way or the other, I'm not trying to do that, I'm just trying to just throw that out on the table is for those kind of discussions.
But I guess you go back to, you go back to, uh, safety, it's expansion.
Yes.
The property tank next door has just chain link fence all the way around, that's down below the hill. So if he's down below the hill, why would we make him do a fancy Taj Mahal fence when there's already pre-existing fences there? So I mean, I think.
But yeah, Collet is, is a currently well-driven road, and so we didn't have that exposed fence, you want a chain link, so, I mean, there's.
Well, and this is, so, I mean, I can't look at, yeah. I get what you're saying, but I mean, it's going to always be a gray area, where it's the, what's going on and what's in the area, I would say.
Well, I, I just want to see the town board react to the residents up here on Williams Road, and then propose something, and say, well, you don't necessarily have to have a fence around the miniscope.
That's a good one, that's a good, that's a really.
We're not saying you don't need a fence.
Oh, oh, you sure?
I guess I said depending on the page.
Ah, well, that's a GB district, so that would probably.
The issue here is that you can't pick and choose, that's not your role, that's a legislative decision.
Yeah.
Okay, you either have to have a fence, or you don't have a fence.
I just said you take what.
Is, is, yeah, is, I guess the question, just out of curiosity, because I don't like curiosity, quite a curiosity. Is, is it screening purposes, is that, is that the fence, or is it security purposes?
Well, the intent was to avoid having people coming into these unsecured areas and pulling chain link fence, we've taken the word security out of. And, and believe me, chain link fence, we've taken the word security out of. Excellent, okay. The, the issue here was having an open area where people can move and leave all kinds of garbage bags.
But let me ask, let me play devil's advocate for a moment. Does a fence be the only way we can do security?
Well, the answer to that, of course it's not.
Of course it's not. So if I come in and say, hey, I want my many storage here and I'm going to put cameras up, it's high security. Why do I need to have a fence? Because I can justify everything he's talking about with cameras.
Unless it's for screening. Then if we run into the issues where the residents or people in the area are worried about the trash, that that's on the, the honor.
Well, cameras are good for certain purposes. But we have seen recently that you can come onto this site, drill a hole in gas tank and nobody knows what that's going on. So where's the security with cameras?
I would say there wasn't enough cameras.
There you go.
I had forty-six. So.
Well, there's a whole, like holes, there's a whole, I have.
Yeah.
So, the whole thing.
So I would say we need fencing. It's just what style and how we control that, there needs to be a word in that. We, I guess.
Yeah, you gotta work on that.
Yeah, yeah.
But keep in mind too, that we're, we're looking at more than just the. One or two sites on Wilmans.
Right, no.
Over on Commercial Drive or over at Tatsuya and Collet.
Yeah, the new one.
We have, we have existing outside storage area along our plan.
All right, so, well, we got to have a start up.
Well, that, that's where I'm going with this. We just spent fifteen minutes on one item out of a lot of pages. Is this more of a workshop that we're, should be setting than a meeting setting?
Me and I'm still trying to.
Let's go through staff, let's go through some comments up here first and we'll, I'll make it, there may, I would go from there. Okay? Jim?
Well, right now I've got nothing on that. Good answer.
Because it has nothing to do with highway, right?
Man.
I'm good.
Okay, Aaron.
All right, so Hugh. Talks about parking restored vehicles. Are we going to include? Or are we going to talk about? Their company moving vehicles or if they're not, if company or rented moving vehicles? Do we want to put that somewhere?
All right. Well, what if the guy had a U-Haul business, like always lockers doing stuff?
Or a movie business, like say.
Well, I get it, but he had his permission ambulance trucks from the first round.
Okay, so again.
But then the sort of always lock that had.
Let's back up. Let's look at his generic businesses. Do you limit anywhere in this town, how many commercial vehicles a business can have?
No.
You want to know why you don't?
I'm going to say no.
It can't. Doug, you want to comment about this for weightments?
Nope.
You want to, look, look, look at FedEx.
There's overnight parking regulations.
Right, overnight parking, yeah.
But that's. So they're on their own.
You can't count that as a business. Hey, you know what? I don't care how big your business grows, you can only have three trucks. You can't do that.
I'm not, no, not so much about how much they have, where they park them.
Sure, you can have designated areas. But you, I mean, we, we can't.
That would be like seven rules.
Saying that a business cannot grow. You can't say that you can have all means so many. Look at FedEx. There, how many trucks do they have?
All the territories.
Or, or, right, hey Jake. I mean, we can go business by business in this town.
So, okay.
So then why would you even leave that?
I just think, I just think that most of the categories should be added in on this, that be screened away.
Sure, we can do screen, that's absolutely. Like I said, if you could pull a designated area, you could screen that area, you could.
Well, this is more reading, this is more reading storage of personal people's. Cameras, boats and trailers, not just, not anybody's movie business or any. I guess maybe it would include U-Haul or not U-Haul, the records is in that business.
Nor, normally when you have regulations like this and you have. The situation where you have exceeded your maximum. Of coverage of the site. Which is what happened in the first phase of. A safe place storage. Okay, if you look at that site, you show me where there's thirty or forty percent of space. It ain't there. Okay, so you, you need to not focus just on what one project was. You need to think about how future projects are going to want to duplicate that.
Right, yeah.
That's playing, you have the space requirements for stripper for teaching and reselling districts.
Okay, did we beat that one up? You got anything else there?
I got one more. I don't think it'll be it.
Okay. You don't think, so go ahead.
I, I, on the last page. Talks about that you might allow for conditioned mini warehouse buildings to be three stories. I'm. I don't like that at all, three stories. We, the only three, the only building that we have. Even close, three stories or more is a hotel. So. We're, we're saying this can be, you, you can have. A warehouse building be one of the tallest buildings in our, in our area. I just don't, I don't like that.
Two stories.
I, I would prefer that.
They wanted three.
Two stories.
They got approved for three.
Yeah, they got approved for three initially, always wanted.
Is it? Yeah, well, I drove by, I drove by them.
It's true now, it's true now. Initially, they got three.
Initially, it was three.
All right, so let's. Let's.
He thought it would be easy.
If you truly look at how many stories is allowed in what, what district, what LI?
LI, it says GB and LI.
Five stories?
Seven.
Seven stories. So we took that seven stories and brought it all the way down to three stories. So current code would allow a seven-story mini warehouse.
Can you read that one more?
This, this is discussion, I mean, but let me, let me.
Beat the old part, turn that to the, just keep the history lesson. We had an indoor golf driving range proposal.
I remember that.
That came in, it was going to go over where the Boomtown kennel was. It went to the county and the county came back and said it was too tall. It was too large a building along the gateway, three thirty-two, and they denied it. Okay? And, and so I called the county planner at the time and I said. Does that mean we have to take, you know, half of the roof off of the Finger Rich Racing and Gaming? Over there because that far exceeds what we were looking at as far as height. Well, what about fire equipment? Well, we just spent a hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars on a pumper or.
Quint?
Quint. And it goes up to seven stories. So they, they settled on the height of that for the district. For the GB and the ally and the GI district. So we worked with the fire department in, in changing that. Because previously it was thirty-five feet. Right down? So. We did what the fire department recommended we do.
So the circle all the way back to your question, can we look at maybe going to, if that's the recommendation on the board, then. By all means, we could look at going to circle.
It'd be hard for us to do this because we already proved a three.
No, no, town board, it's town board.
Oh, that's right, that's right, it was.
But then they modified. No?
No, it just came in two. But they got room to build another one and it could be a three.
They built a two-story one, they still haven't got that though.
So you guys, does the code still limit square footage of condition? It is.
It's blank, I'm sure.
That's why you want to change the square footage of each floor up? Because when you go to three, obviously.
Plus rent.
Plus rent.
Just the full ground, okay?
Okay, anything else?
No.
Adrian.
I mean, this second right now, I mean, I usually, I brought you a little more.
All right.
I, I, well, I, yeah, I know, it's all sudden that we started talking about some. Some of these things I hadn't really thought about.
So.
I, I can be right by the next meeting. Okay, I guess.
And Tim gave feedback that there were a couple he found confusing, but other than that, she was okay with. So here's what I would propose. I propose that we. Tell the town board, or we recommend it to town board. You know, start taking a look at the proposal. And then we will, at our next meeting, come up with comments on it for at our next meeting. That will do two things. Give us a chance to look at it again. And to provide written comments if you would before the meeting, so staff can review them. And it allows staff to continue to review at the same time. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Everybody okay? Staff's okay with that? Ron, you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's what we'll do. Well, I will recommend that the town board. Take a look at it, go forward, you know, there, but, and we will provide comments in our next meeting. And please get your comments into the meeting so I can get it to staff sooner than later. Okay, so that's where we're at.
Mr. Chairman, do you want that, that, on the board actions, yeah?
Yes. Okay, next up, open discussion is Ron.
Okay, we still are waiting word on the tab grant for sidewalks. It was supposed to be out in February. Talked to state officials and others and. I don't know, it must be some kind of election coming up here in the state. But anyways, the decision will be made sometime on that. Maybe, who knows? I did work with the state DOT and finally got their agreement to post no standing signs. Along Route three thirty-two. Yeah, it was interesting.
Yeah.
Instead of no parking. Which I understand the federal highway law prohibits. Municipalities from not allowing. Vehicles to park temporarily while they go in to the bathroom or pick up something to eat and move on. As long as there's not a safety issue like we have around three thirty-two. No, no standing is a different scenario.
Means the same.
Well, kind of.
Meaning below or instead.
Yeah, no standing means you don't stop. Okay? And, and that can be enforced by law enforcement. So we're getting no standing signs on three thirty-two. Nice. And they'll go a distance of a hundred feet into the median in each direction. So. That avoids the issue of any vehicles standing in that congested area there of the intersection.
Yeah.
Well, we'll see. Hey, at least it's moving forward.
Yeah.
They, they've, as you know. We have a proposal for farming market center. One of the things that's come up with that project is we're looking for the traffic data. On trip generations for each of uses over there. GLN has said that they don't feel that farming market center is. Contributing their fair share to the improvements that are necessary. And that they're weighing the burden of the front of that. There's others over there that are involved. Even G and A, because the state DOT has told them, don't even bother coming back with any more development. Until you get a solution that doesn't have additional traffic coming on in ninety-six or three thirty-two. Three thirty-two current drivels. So we're trying to, let's say, find solutions. So everybody is happy with that issue. Things keep going up. We, we've got another proposal. That we're starting to look at. It'll be coming maybe at some point in the future to the town board for incentive zoning. So over here on ninety-six, east of the racetrack between ninety-six and Collet. One of the sites was sold or, let's say you had an option. You put a sole prime on. And that's gone away. So we've got two parcels over there that we're trying to work out some. Ideas on what kinds of amenities would be required. Highway parks, water and sewer, all these related issues. When we get something that looks like, like. Have a chance, we'll give you more information on that.
Currently says it's two hundred and twenty-seven lines or something.
Yeah, down from over three hundred.
Yeah.
And some, so it's, it's a reduction, but it's.
Right.
There's still a lot of issues.
Right.
Water and sewer has issues with pump stations and all of this stuff.
Yeah.
So other code issues. The egg advisory committee is meeting to start talking about some of their concerns. That they have, maybe, just maybe, we'll be able to move forward with some conservation zoning district. Regulations that are needed. And we have a need that later this year with the conference of plan in place. Start tackling some of the other zoning districts. This many warehouses, any indication that's going to be a fun exercise? So. With all that said, you know, we have.
I'm only going to read that right now. Okay, and, all right, your next meeting, we have Wilmans Road National Park. For their special use permit and the preliminary site plan. I do have an update on this project. It will still be a continuation, but I have a continuation date of when they will come back in with an updated plan for that project. So they're asking for one last continuation and then like I said, pull that up. Good stuff going with that, so. And then your other project for next meeting is the safe place storage where there's special use in a preliminary site plan. So they have been to PRC multiple times and have worked with staff and are, are ready to hopefully move forward with their preliminary site plan. Some other things I want to report on. The auto watch is open. We issued a CMO this week. They have some of their landscaping to do and seating, but they have till May thirty-first on that, so. Happy to see that up and running. Right next door at Myers, they did get approval for their sign to go on the building from your guys' recommendation. And that will be up on Friday. The battery across the property will come off on Friday. And paintings that go in the four spots will be in next week in itself. So the old building that's out front, they are still waiting. RGNE for the disconnect of the gaps. Everything else has been disconnected and they are ready. If you drive by there, you'll see that they have the equipment sitting right next to it, ready to go.
Time to hit it, well, somebody will turn it off first.
I have reached out to RGNE. Supposedly they are going to be out there on Saturday to disconnect. And they will start rebuilding that. And they will start rebuilding that building on Monday, so. Uh, I've been working with Tim on a lot of drainage issues around the town and been spending a lot of time out at our brand new town park, Beaver Creek Park. So, uh, trying to get that ready for everybody this summer. The last thing I will report on is I am on vacation next week. Uh, John W. in my office will be the guy, the contact person if you need any assistance, so.
Cool. Tim?
Um, not much from highway, just hearing down from winter and getting ready for spring.
Yeah, so you continue to do that.
Hopefully we're done with snow.
Hopefully, hopefully. Lance?
Uh, barely isn't much to go on. I think Ron and Steph covered most of it, but just update the board. Uh, D E C is working on the general permit for MS four communities. That's going through the review process. I believe that should be adopted by the end of this month. Uh, I've been working with staff. We're gonna start doing our MS four meetings again. Um, and working through our regulations, which we adopted a while ago. We're just gonna get taken to before with those goals that we're setting there and make sure that's up to par. Um, other than that, I think we've covered everything else, so I'm good.
Okay. Andy from the public, Dan, I'm sorry, Ron.
Yeah, uh, two things. I thought at the next meeting on the twentieth, we had continued the special use permit and site plan pool for the Wilmus Road industrial park. Did we change that?
I guess that we're doing that.
So we're gonna do it, but it's gonna be another continuation.
I thought we talked about the other...
Oh. To a gate.
Okay. And then the other thing is, uh, DRS, we are going to have a...
Pre-construction.
Pre-construction meeting on the twenty-first. And Lance and Dan are, uh, the meeting on that because that's a unique project. It's not your standard.
So you guys are environmental engineer?
Yeah. Manager. No, no, man.
Team.
Make sure that that's not the code officer. Let's just make sure that that's again in the minutes.
Trees actually, for asking about other things separate from, it's hard to get service on trees and you put the number on that site. That might become an issue.
They better be ordering them soon. I mean, you'll have to accommodate a good amount, it's my understanding, but every, I've reviewed forty-one. Not one of them has been able to accommodate the number of trees species that was requested. Man, no.
Yeah. I've, I've been struggling too, so that's why I'm making it up. They're just not in the supply right now.
Right.
COVID impacted that, uh, some of the growers, there's some issues out there right now. I know that was a condition I think it was on there.
Put it out. Dan, anything? Jerry, right? Sorry, Matt.
I think you guys have been busy.
We, we tried to do nothing until you came back.
A little plot of land that doesn't need to be worked on.
Not in this town.
Uh, not in this. This one would be out of business.
Yeah. For sure. Uh, I was gonna ask you, once the solar moratorium went up, I kind of expected a mini flood of some applications. We're not seeing any yet?
Uh, no, they, um, the one...
I know a lot of J's this, but I'm just curious.
Who did you ask, Dan or me?
No, you. Lance is having corner right now.
I was hoping you would ask Dan.
Anyhow, uh, one of the sites, you know, is now considered for...
Housing.
Housing.
Yeah.
Okay. The other thing that I'm hearing is that they're kind of concerned about having defined, you know, equal amount of acreage to establish a conservation he's been on to the life of the solar farm. So that's a deterrent. Imagine that.
Imagine that.
And then the other thing Lance will be happy to know is that they're, they're still looking at that potential site there on the Michigan Road. Tom.
Well, it should be interesting going forward. Other than that...
Actually, I'll continue with what Ron said though, is I know the one site he's talking about has not gone actually to residential. Another site was a current business that is continuing to operate, uh, so that went away. There was one more site and that's leaving the solar plant now, so.
Well, I can let the board know that the staff keeps being very informed on what's going on and brings me in whenever there's an opportunity. I came into the meeting on housing development, uh, that took over the solar farm area and that kind of stuff. I've been in on numerous, uh, meetings with potential developers and, uh, continue to put our, you know, our comments in. PRC is also the same thing. I try to go in there at least on the ones that are important to us and try to give, give our opinion in. So, other than that, anything else from anybody? Go ahead, Dan.
We, uh, another project you guys will be seeing here, uh, next month is Parkbrook subdivision. They are coming back for a re-subdivision of section seven A B. Uh, they got figured out how to do stormwater back there, but how the lots are laid out, they have to redesign it and, uh...
How many more are there back there?
Uh, there's two sections, that would be four houses? So, because they have to, a thump, a crescent, they gotta reroute that.
Right.
It makes more room for a pot catcher, so. Uh, that has been submitted to us for a preliminary subdivision, a re-subdivision. So, uh, but they did submit the site plan. I know it's not over the M R V, but that's gonna be a big project to brought you guys to talk for housing.
Interesting. You know, the other problem is, now you brought that up, is those townhouses they're building over there in Parkbrook on the back side? Over there, what's that? I don't know.
Redford. Redwood home, but the Redford.
Yeah, Redford in there.
Yeah.
Those guys, those guys make a mess in that road some days, don't they?
Some days they do. Although they're pretty good about cleaning it up, like, I'm just saying. So my advice...
Sometimes I go through there at five thirty at night.
My advice to you, yeah, don't drive that road.
Okay.
You wanna hear something related to that dirty? I had somebody today that'd been over in the new power wash. And they said, no, they're refusing to go there until they get that place cleaned up. I go through, get your car cleaned, come out, check all that.
Yeah, go through the block.
I think that was free. I thought they were gonna open it now.
Well, it was free. It's free this week.
So you think this is tough? Wait till everybody gets their reassessment on first part of May, so. I'll just leave on that positive note. Most due adjourned by Adrian, seconded by Aaron. On the paper, see if I'm saying that.